Everyone, I'd like to welcome you to the December Board of Education meeting. Ms. Reed, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gardner?
Here.
Mrs. McAvina?
Here.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Here.
Mr. Sherbin?
Here.
Mr. Stobbe?
Here.
Would you please rise for a pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
All right. All right. Dr. Debe, I think we have a couple of special presentations this evening.
Sure. This evening, we have Mr. Jamie Franco, who is the principal at Eastview Elementary School. They are our school spotlight, and I'll let him introduce the people he has with him here this evening.
Hi, everybody. Today, we're talking about some of the accomplishments of Eastview that I brought to my teachers here, who have been an integral part of our accomplishments. So I have Amy Bone, who are my third grade teachers. And Kristen Cronft, who also have other third grade teachers. And they are actually in their final semester of their internship internship. So they were taking on some experiences and doing some programs for us. And we're going to talk a little bit about our first ever literacy event that we had at Eastview, and then also our school winning the Bronson Silver Leadership from the State of Ohio. So Amy, can you bring that over?
I don't think it's mine.
Absolutely.
On November 20th, Eastview held its first literacy night. We called it Fall Into Literacy at Eastview. We had 80 families and over 100 students in attendance. They participated in a variety of activities, from presentations, from experts in the field of reading, on the importance of reading at home with their children, to fluency, decoding, and comprehension. They also participated in bring a book, take a book home, and bring a book and donate it to take a book home. We had volunteers that also participated, and one of the high school volunteers took all the extra books from the event and donated them to Avon Lake Shelter. We had some community resources there as well. The Avon Lake Public Library was there and shared some of their programming with families. The Lorraine County Children and Family First Council was there and made families aware of some of the resources that they have available. Students and families also were able to enjoy some treats from community members that donated such as crumble cookies and marvelous pizza and some mini mufft cakes from Nothing Like Cakes. And then we also had the Eastview PTA, and Anna's Auto donated a significant amount of things so that students had something to take away. And they had raffle baskets that were literacy-based games and things that they tried to take away as well. So it was a huge success, and we're really looking forward to having another one soon. Do you have any questions?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm going to talk a little bit about PBIS. So PBIS has been active at Eastview for a few years now. Last year, we received the Bronze Award for our committee and our program at school. So this is a program that supports positive reinforcement of behavior, academic, social, emotional skills for students. We really focus on kind of the positive reinforcement of all of these in our school. And we were recognized last year for the Bronze Award. This year, we received both the Bronze and the Silver, having had the program active, using data, meeting regularly, and tracking students, and using our Tier Two support to get the Silver recognition this year for our committee. It's a fun committee. It's a fun group. We keep things very positive and lively in the building, reinforcing across the school using the same system. It's been really positive for students coming through the program.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The second part of my presentation this evening is last year, I applied for a grant along with a couple of other districts in our county to get more CC plus classes on our campus. And I'm really excited because without any increase in staff, we actually have been going through and looking through our course catalog department by department and identifying areas where we can really enhance the curriculum, maybe by eliminating some courses that have low registration and changing the number of sections of other courses to update our curriculum and to update the opportunities for kids to take CC plus courses. We have several teachers who are getting certified to teach CC plus courses as a result of that grant. And I wanted to, as part of the marketing we're going to be doing in January, about how Avon Lake City Schools, not just at the high school but across the district, we have programs that make us second to none. One of the areas where we've noticed that we've had a drop in students has been at the high school, and, you know, none of the private schools offer the amount of CC plus and AP courses that Avon Lake does. So I'm really excited about all of the new CC plus courses we'll be offering. I'm actually just going to read them out loud for people who are listening. We'll be offering computer games and simulation, which is a technology-based, personal finance, which is a business class, business administration. We think about how many kids go into business from Avon Lake, and now we'll have a college-level course on business administration. Both French and Spanish will be offering a college-level one and a college-level two class. Math has been really working on updating their curriculum. They're going to be retiring the math analysis course and offering a college algebra and a business calculus. And the business calculus is one that has been a huge need, and we're excited to offer that. And again, that goes in in addition to all of the other CC plus courses we currently offer and the AP courses.
Jack, with our peers, I mean, how common is it for districts to teach most of these classes in-house versus sending their students to LCC or Tri-C or other places?
We will offer more in-house CC plus courses than anyone in the county.
So it looks like there's nine new. Is, am I reading it correctly?
You are.
That we almost doubled the offerings of CC plus?
Yes.
Choices to the students?
Kids can take CC plus courses at the college, but to have this number of courses offered on campus is not the norm for the county. We'll be the exception.
On the foreign language ones that you mentioned, I ran-
Elementary French and elementary Spanish, there's two levels of it. It's year one, year two.
So do those, do we know at most Ohio universities, at most schools in Ohio, state schools in Ohio, not Ohio University itself, but just any of the state schools, do they accept those without a testing process? Or how does that work?
So the difference between CC plus and AP courses, so the CC plus, they're actually getting the credit from Lorraine County Community College. So they will enroll as LCCC students. They'll have a transcript from LCCC. There's a program called Transferology that a lot of students use when they're in college. It looks at courses and where you're going. You can say, I took this course at LCCC. What courses will it count for at Ohio State or Miami or OU or wherever? And that's kind of how they look at that. But they actually have the credit earned, and it's, it helps them in the long run because that's one less college credit they need to take to graduate. So they've not only saved some money, but they've come in with some credits. Whereas AP courses, AP, they have to take the test. Then different colleges have different scores that they use, and those are generally waived than requirements of courses people need to take, and it gives the students more flexibility in what other electives or what other courses they want to take in its place. So they both have advantages in different ways, but either way, they're both fantastic options for our students.
So Jack, as I understand it as well, and correct me if I'm wrong, not only do they get the credit, but the actual grade counts? Does the grade transfer over?
The college, it shows up on the transcript. Now, it's up to whatever college they go to to determine whether or not they put the grade in as part of their transfer. But on the transcript they get from LCCC, it will have their grade.
Thanks for the update, Jack.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda tonight is our public participation. Just a reminder, public participation at our regular board meetings is permitted to allow individual members of the public to address the board on issues of public concern and is not intended to be in forum for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with board members or district officials. The primary role of the board is to listen and to reflect on your comments. Sometimes board members may respond or ask questions, but not always. Whether we respond or not, your input is valued. The public participation session is for the general comments on matters relevant to the school district. Those who wish to address the board must complete a comment card and submit to Dr. Debe. Each person will be given three minutes to speak until a total time of 30 minutes is used. So Dr. Debe, do we have folks to sign up tonight?
Yes, we have four speakers. The first one is Kathy Brady.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Brady, and I am one of the Licensed Intervention Specialists for Avon Lake City Schools. Along with Kristen Morris, who could not be here tonight, we are reaching out to share all the remarkable opportunities the SOAR program offers and to advocate for its support for our gifted students. Since its launch in 2016, the SOAR program has exceeded its goal of creating an academic environment that truly celebrates the abilities of the gifted child. It has developed into a premier model of gifted education. This year, we're increasing support during wind time that enhances the experience for our gifted students. The SOAR program operates on a modest classroom budget while utilizing high-quality materials. The Gifted Intervention Specialists have worked numerous hours to secure multiple grants with over $8,000 in funding through the Avon Lake City Schools Foundation and the PTA. We have engaged in extensive professional development to enhance our curriculum and classroom materials, enabling us to offer our students hands-on experiments with free resources from Ohio Energy that explore wind and solar energy, career pathways, advanced circuitry, and robotics. The SOAR program promotes critical thinking and computational skills through STEM initiatives, advanced mathematics, and ELA lessons. Additionally, we prioritize the social-emotional development of our gifted students, fostering an environment where they feel safe to take risks and learn from their mistakes. SOAR students engage in goal-setting activities, empowering them to select personal objectives that enhance their learning. This year, several students are exploring languages such as Spanish, Chinese, and French in the elementary level. Our students have achieved remarkable accolades from awards in writing and math competitions to top innovation honors in invention contests. This year, we again look forward to competing in the Maryland Bianchi Playwriting Festival and Pitch Challenge. SOAR students participate in community service through Warm Up America, an organization that supports individuals in need with crocheted hats, scarves, and gloves. The SOAR program encompasses all attributes of an Avon Lake student by providing student-centered learning, personalized educational excellence, developing resilience, self-confidence that will benefit students throughout their life. Preparing students for evolving world is embedded in all we do. All of this offers just a glimpse into the remarkable impact the SOAR program has on our students. I invite you to visit our classrooms to witness firsthand the transformative opportunities that the SOAR program provides our gifted students before making any final decisions about its future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker are Haley Johns and Otto Johns.
You can go ahead.
Hello, my name is Hadley Johns. I live at 32834 Tanglewood Court, and I am in fourth grade at Redwood Elementary. And today, I'm here to tell you why the Avon Lake SOAR program is important to me. The Avon Lake SOAR program molds young minds and teaches me skills I wouldn't learn in my normal classroom. Having a separate class is important because we can learn more complex things in fun ways, like coding's bureaus, which would be disruptive in our normal class. Last but not least, removing the SOAR program means that other gifted children, like my brother, won't have the same opportunity that I had, and that doesn't seem fair. He wanted to be in SOAR someday. He said, I want to be in SOAR because my sister always brings home cool work. I know there is only so much money, and you have to make hard choices, but I hope you choose to keep the SOAR program because SOAR is the reason I had the confidence to stand up here today. I've also collected signatures for other students and community members in support of saving SOAR. Thank you.
Listen.
Hadley, I want to tell Emma what a great job you did.
Our next speaker is Gerald Phillips.
Gerald W. Phillips, 461 Winward Way. Last board meeting on November 19th, I spoke, even though most of that discussion was about the levies and potential cuts. I gave a handout regarding something that's going to be coming before the board, which is the TIP program with the Avon Lake Power Plant. Also today, I gave you a handout, a little more background about the interim development agreement that the city has entered, and also the letter of intent to purchase the so-called part of the power plant, which is north of Lake Road, 23.22 acres. If you look in the development agreement, you know, they're purchasing, you have $15 million and diverting a minimum of $15 million for that, plus $15 million for the improvements from future tax revenues for the school district. A little bit of background is Avon Lake has set up an Avon Lake Community Improvement Corporation under ORC 724. They act as the agent, sole agent, to do the redevelopment. This organization, CIC, set up a committee called the Brownfield Committee. Unfortunately, the Brownfield Committee doesn't hold public meetings like you do. They don't produce public meeting minutes, so we've been unable to find out what was discussed. Nothing was in public. And unfortunately, we had to sue them in the Ohio Supreme Court to get rid of mandamus, to force them to open their meetings and produce the minutes. Included in the information you got is an appraisal that we recently got through public records requests for that 23.22 acres. And that appraisal is for $2.37 million, far different than the $15 million that was presented to the city when they signed that interim development agreement. The particular attorney had that appraisal as of October 2023. That wasn't disclosed to city council. City council didn't know that that land wasn't when they signed that agreement. And it's very perplexing, disturbing that such actions is occurring before city council. I, if you want to look at the Supreme Court case, you're more than welcome. It's 2024-1711. You know, it should have been disclosed exactly what it is, okay? And I don't know why it wasn't disclosed. We had city council members specifically asked that the day that that agreement was signed, were there appraisal? And Todd Davis, the attorney, said no. So thank you. If there's any questions, you can call me. I have my contact information there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Valerie Smaldino.
I hope I said that right. Hello, my name is Valerie Smaldino. I have three children in the district. I also work in the district. I'm very pro-levy, pro-school. I voted yes for everything, but I'm here today to ask you to please consider only putting an operating levy on the next levy and not new schools. I don't think that the district is in the mood to hear about new schools right now. I think when all the surveys went out prior, it was before they realized the state of the district, and I feel like people were blindsided by that. And I think they're very upset that we're in the state that we're in and that we're having to cut SOAR in schools. I don't think anybody knew that it was, that we're basically broke, it seems. So I think in, if we just focus on an operating levy, get everything back to where everybody is comfortable, and then start a brand-new conversation about schools, I think it would pass that way because we tried it together and it failed, we separated them and it failed. So I think the path forward is to do it separately. Because I think if you talk about new schools, it's just going to fail again. People want things back the way they were, and I think there's a distrust about what was handled. So I just don't think moving forward with schools and an operating levy, I don't think it'll pass. And I think it's extremely important that we pass an operating levy so we can keep the things that we know and love. So I just think it's extremely important that we just focus on just an operating levy, get things back to where everybody is comfortable, and then have a conversation about new schools. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is that a check?
That's it, yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval and signing of the minutes. We only had one meeting in November. Did anyone have any issues with those minutes?
Some of them.
Okay, I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'm excited.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So next item on the agenda is our board discussion, and I know our team has been really busy working on a lot of different fronts on issues that are relevant to our future, and so we're going to kind of go through those tonight. We're going to call Dr. Lovr up first, and he's going to share a little bit about our buildings and situations with that.
Just take it off. Thanks. Good evening. So we've been on a long journey with the report that came out from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. It was a report that assessed the general condition of our facilities minus the bus garage and athletic facilities in the district and provided an estimated repair and renovation cost to the district so the district could gather folks together and begin talking about the next half-century-plus of our facilities in the district. So that report was completed in December of 2020 using a 2019 cost set from the OFCC to estimate those costs. I received that report when I came to the district on March 1st, 2021, and we reported on that, we gave a summary of that report in April of 2021, just prior to the convening of a facilities committee for the district to look at the condition of our facilities and our path moving forward. So tonight, I'd like to give a 2024 cost set adjustment to that 2020 report to sort of give a lay of the land of where we are. And the photo that I selected, I promise, is not just for shock value, but this is the state of much of the infrastructure in the district. It was the state in 2020, 2021, and it has continued on this path since then. There are some alarm bells that are ringing red in the district in terms of our infrastructure. This is a picture from the crawl space under Redwood Elementary. It is simply just older cast iron waste piping, sanitary waste piping. All the sanitary waste piping in the district at the elementaries, Learwood and Troy, is of this age or older and is beginning to disintegrate under the buildings, resulting in some pretty expensive repairs and some sticky situations in the crawl space, as you can imagine. And we have these challenges to face with roofing, electrical, plumbing, windows, doors, HVAC systems. None of them are small-ticket items, and many of them have gone unaddressed except for emergency repairs over the last three and a half years that we've been in possession of this report. So just as a recap of the 2020 OFCC assessment, it had some key components. It consisted of about 500 pages of enrollment projections and trends, which have since been updated by Dr. Debe and others, square footage breakdowns of the buildings, renovation-replacement ratios, and a full building assessment summary for each building, including everything from HVAC to general site condition. Almost everything in our district was given a line item in that assessment and a cost estimate to repair those items. There were also some assessment categories then at the end of that report that scored each building in terms of the overall school site, structural and mechanical features, the maintainability of the physical plant, the physical site, building safety and security, the general educational adequacy of each building, and just the general environment for education as well. So that report contained all of those items. At the time, these were the estimated repair and renovation costs utilizing a 2019 pre-COVID cost set for the district. And you can see the numbers there. The number totaled at the bottom was $93.68 million. That's an estimate. We rounded off to the nearest hundred there. But that's where the $93 million figure came from that we've been talking about for a number of years. That was the total estimate. And you'll see there that I included Erie View Elementary in the repair-renovation estimate at the time because it contains all seven buildings in the district. This was not to physically change brick-and-mortar layout of buildings. This was to repair and renovate all systems within the buildings, HVAC, roofing, et cetera, but it would not change the physical brick-and-mortar space of any of our facilities as well. This was to bring them up to standard of new construction without messing with brick-and-mortar and everything else. It was true repair-renovation cost.
Can you remind me, because I always forget? Did it include installing air conditioning in the elementary?
Yes, it did. And one of the reasons for the large cost at the elementary schools was to put air conditioning in Learwood, Eastview, Redwood, Westview, Erie View. You would have to convert those systems to a ducted system. They do not currently have the ducted infrastructure to handle air conditioning. So any renovation to those buildings, probably at each building included north of $1 million each, just to add the appropriate duct work that we would need to add air conditioning. So it was, it was very significant to add those features in. So going through and updating the estimated costs, the OFCC did that as part of the expedited local partnership program. We knew we probably weren't going to be able to partner with the OFCC in any building project because we are so heavily locally funded, and we wouldn't be in the money anytime soon, and we wouldn't receive more than 4% or 5% of a total project. So it's really not an option for a district like Avon Lake. So the challenge was to update the 2019 cost set with current numbers. And so in order to do that, here's the methodology that I used to do that. I obtained the 2024 cost set from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission and applied that cost set to every single item on the list for every single building. I also went through and applied the updated cost factors, which have increased post-COVID for construction for Region Four in Ohio. That's the north-central region. It's the region they placed us in in 2019 as well. I removed items and percentages of items that have been completed at each building. So for example, in the high school, I pulled out the entire $1.1 million estimated cost to redo the building controls. We were able to do that at a significantly less cost, but in the 2024 update, I yanked the entire project out of the estimate because we have completed that project. And that was also in the interest of trying to preserve a conservative cost estimate for today. For buildings where we've replaced roof sections, for example, I removed percentages of the total square footage of the roof based on how much roof we have completed. Because you not only have to take into account the roof membrane, but also the metal that goes on the roof, there's a lot of associated costs with that, downspouts, drains, et cetera. So I took all of those items out of the revised estimate. And then I went through and categorized the repair and renovation items based on what we feel our estimated needs are in the district. I categorized those as high need, such as HVAC and roofing systems that need to be done probably within the next three to five years, elevated need probably within the next five to 10 years that they have to get done, plumbing, electrical. There's a number of key systems that are going to have to be done. And then more moderate needs, things that may get done while you're doing some of the higher elevated needs, such as hazardous material abatement and things like that that are locked away in systems and insulation right now, or other items that may not be as high of a priority of some of those key big-ticket systems. as high of a priority of some of those key big-ticket systems. So updating the estimated costs, and this is where I need everyone to take a deep breath. In 2020, the strike-through numbers are the numbers from the previous slide, the $93.68 million. Applying that methodology to these numbers in 2024 post-COVID construction world, we estimate that those numbers have now increased substantially across the board, as high as $133.39 million, including the removal of Erieview Elementary School when Erieview comes offline this summer. There's still an increase on the elementaries despite going down a campus. And the percentages are going to look a little strange here when I pop that up, but I think they're important to consider. I do think that there will be some items that are not this expensive that may come down a little bit, but not enough to change the overall calculus. I do think that many of the percentage changes there are very accurate. The 30% to 40% range is very accurate, given what we've seen in the world of construction and supply chains over the last three and a half years. Troy may appear a little bit high because Troy has some unique characteristics in terms of its HVAC system. It's a rooftop unit system. That building, I believe, was built all-electric back in 1970, so it doesn't have the same infrastructure that the other buildings do. And also recommended for Troy was a total replacement of the entire electrical system, that it was not adequate now or for future building needs. And I believe that also has to do with the increased number and the cost multiplier that was assigned to electrical systems in the 2024 cost set. I did try to benchmark some of this. I looked at the numbers, and I said, wow, that's a lot. And we benchmarked some of our HVAC systems at the buildings with a local vendor that we have worked with on several projects, and we were reasonably close, some a little bit under, some a little bit over, on our estimates. But the estimates were correct for the 2024 cost set. So we've sort of begun that process as well, double-checking the numbers. I guess the key takeaway here is that the cost to repair and renovate the aging building, 60, 70 years old in some cases, has increased in great amounts over the last three and a half years as we emerged from COVID, and as we obviously know the challenges that have come along with the supply chain and with manufacturing in the country. And so the overall takeaway is that the total cost to renovate or repair the buildings has increased significantly. I was asked by a resident at one of our coffee talks over the summer about just what I would ballpark that number at, and I came up with a number at that. I said, I think it would be northward of $120, $125 million. And the resident looked at me and said, are you serious? It was like Clark and Cousin Eddie from Christmas Vacation. Are you serious, Clark? And I said, yes, and I think that's a conservative estimate. And when we put pencil to paper over the last month and really looked at those numbers, I do believe that that $120 million that I had quoted over the summer was a conservative estimate, and that we are probably north of $130 million even with Erieview coming offline.
Ned, you mentioned this as just basically bringing the infrastructure up to current code standards, not changing any of the brick-and-mortar layout of the school. So really, from a student standpoint, coming into school, sitting at my desk and learning, other than feeling cooler because we've put air conditioning at the elementary schools in this number, they really would not notice one difference of us spending this $130 million on these old buildings, correct?
I think it's even more from the standpoint of, and Dr. Debe can talk to the, you know, can speak to the curriculum piece of this, but it doesn't change the nature of the spaces to repair and renovate a building. We have many districts around us that have renovated older buildings. They've renovated them to make the renovation last for 20 or 30 years, and they are experiencing challenges not only with the solutions that they've grafted onto the buildings because they weren't built specifically for that purpose, but also they are still not creating flexible spaces for today's curriculum. So if you want to have flexible space and you want to have the ability to do different things than we did, you know, 60 or 70 years ago, it does not change that physical brick-and-mortar component. It does change floor tiles and lighting and things of that nature, but it doesn't change how the space is going to be used or the availability of more space to be used in different ways. And not to belabor the point, but the classic example I always come back to is we do so much more small-group instruction today. We have students that come to us with many more profound needs than they did 60 or 70 years ago. And one of the great success stories of our education system in the last 30 years is how we've integrated everybody into the public school experience in this country from an inclusion standpoint. But that has required different spaces and more small-group spaces and more flexible spaces in order to meet the needs of those students. And this type of a project would not address those needs in that way.
Thanks.
Mike, this isn't to counter what you just said, but I do want to make sure that I say it, which is AC isn't just about making our kids cooler. I mean, we still have windows open to let air in. And I just, the only reason I feel it's an important thing to have on record is that I think that it's been quite frustrating as you talk to people in the community who don't understand the importance of safety in our schools. And when those windows are open, they are access points. I'm just going to say, and I know we don't want to say those things, but you just said it will make our building cooler, but I just want to say it'll also make them safer. And I'm not saying that, I mean, this is a lot to take in, Ned, just overall costs. The one question I do have, because we've talked about the operating levy and operating in a deficit, and I know, Autumn, you're going to give us an update on that soon, but as we think about repairs to our school, and I know that we've really been taking our best step every time we've tried to say, take something to the ballot. We're listening, we're trying to understand, and, you know, the financial appetite just doesn't seem to be there because of all these other factors that are driving these costs up, right? People are feeling that at home. But at what point do we get, are we at risk too? And maybe that's where you're prioritizing those high, and as you get into this, you'll start to talk about that. But I'm getting increasingly concerned, too, when I hear things like just take an operating levy, when we don't have an option to do that, do we? I mean, we could, but I feel like we're reaching a point of, you know, we've been waiting since March 2021 when you got here. And we've been doing, we've been holding for all the right reasons, because we're like, if we build new, we don't want to be throwing taxpayer money away either.
Without treading on some ground that I think is probably going to, you know, require some more discussion, I will say this. The uncertainty about our facilities is a huge challenge for us. And I'll give you an example. We are pouring a lot of operating dollars into repairs of aging HVAC systems. And when we make a replacement, we can't do it all at once. So for example, the issues we had last month with the heating at Troy is we got into colder weather, and it dropped 20 degrees outside, and things weren't warming up properly, and we were having challenges. The Troy system needs to be looked at, renovated, or replaced. We don't have, we don't have the $4 or $5 million to replace the entire system, so we do the controls. We start with the brain of the system so we can suss out where the other issues are down the line and try to control the units better. Replacing the controls on an aging HVAC system in piecemeal means that then not only are we going to find more problems, but those controls are now interfacing with older systems. And we pour more and more operating dollars into the repair of those systems when a flat $3 or $4 or $5 million upfront may be the better investment to replace the entire system. And so I live in this world of feeling, you know, like we need to repair all of this at once to make it all work properly, and to live in a world where I know that's not possible, and continuing to sign those bills for the more expensive repairs is a huge challenge for us. Our buildings are directly tied to the health of our operating dollars right now. The number of buildings that we are operating and the age of those buildings is having an immense drag, in my opinion, on our operating budget.
And then, you know, as far as this process, someone might ask, well, why don't we just go back to the OFCC to have them update the numbers? If we would have done that, you know, the number might likely be maybe a little bit different from what you would have, but that would have been probably another year process to get that, to have them come out, to assess all the buildings, at least a year?
At least. We would have to reengage. I don't even know if they would reengage with us again for free, like I believe they did during the expedited local partnership program. And so it was much easier for me to get the cost set and put pencil to paper and go through each of those items.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you mentioned about the HVAC system as an example, as we get into some of these things, to be able to bounce certain pieces off of our vendors, to understand them, and to continue to validate these. But I appreciate all the work you've done to get these numbers back to a more current subset so that we know what we're working with.
I think the other thing, though, on my mind is, I don't know, the journey that we're going to need to go on in whatever timeframe so that people understand that, even if you don't build new buildings, you're going to need a bond to do work, right? You'll need some sort of cash to make these repairs. And I feel like that has not, I don't know, in my circles, we don't talk about that a lot, but I'm just saying it out loud, because I think sometimes we forget, like, our PI fund is so small, we just can't keep up with it.
And these numbers don't include PI purchases, bus purchases, maintenance of the transportation facility, maintenance of Memorial Stadium and other athletic facilities, et cetera. And those are very difficult conversations, because if we're going to have them and offer them, we have an obligation to maintain them. And I agree that we cannot simply PI our way out of this, given the fact that the PI is about $700,000 annually matched up against, even if it was still $93 million, $700,000 annually, when you include bus purchases, everything else is not going to be adequate.
All right. Thanks, Ned, and we may call you back up later when we get into some of the other scenario stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Joel?
Before Autumn gives her updated five-year forecast, I'm going to just give you an update as to where we are in terms of the reductions and the progress that we're making on some of these things. So we looked at reducing our staffing across all categories. As you know, we offered a retirement incentive to all of our district employees, not just our teaching staff. We had several people take advantage, but unfortunately, not as many people as we hoped would do that. So we're still in the process of making those staffing assignments and looking at all of that staffing. That should be completed, you know, well after, probably soon after the first of the year. Looking at the elimination of non-emergency overtime, it's something that we have started. There's been memos that have gone out to our principals to make sure that they are preapproving any type of overtime that needs to get done in our buildings, that it's not just blanket being signed off on. Looking at the increased pay to participate for our athletics, I think we put that information out in one of my newsletters, that we're going to have a range of anywhere from $300 to $700, depending on sports. And I will lump in the last bullet point on this list, that because we were able to increase, it allowed us the capability of keeping all of our athletic teams, so the five teams that were slated, to be reduced. We are no longer in a position where we need to do that because of the increase to the pay to participate. Building rental fees and fees for field rentals, we have a draft version that Dr. Lovr and I still need to go over before we finalize that, but that will get, we will politicize that as soon as we decide to finalize it. Get your blessing on that from the board as well. The eliminated full-day kindergarten, we came up with a way to be able to offer full-day kindergarten with a limited number of slots. So we have 120 slots that will be available for kindergarten when we start our registration here on January 28th. The elective course offerings, we have eliminated some of, but as you see, we've also added, so it's probably going to be a wash in turn, and the cost savings is that we don't need any additional teachers or reductions to do that. The supplementals and extracurricular activities, still working through what that would be. We had some staff members that came up with some suggestions on how we can keep some of those, because we know that those programs are really important to our students. I know in the past, there may have been fees associated with some of those extracurricular activities. For example, third, fourth grade choir, fifth and sixth grade choir, would there be a nominal fee to help cover the cost of that supplemental so that we can still offer that for our students? We're looking at that right now. The elimination of middle-school teaming is going to be a reduction of about three to four staff members, so by just changing the way we deliver instruction, there is a cost savings there. We talked about the SOAR program. We're still going to be able to offer gifted services to our kids who qualify, so that while the program itself has, is a reduction, the services to our students will not be eliminated. The operating levy and ballot up for discussion with all of you. Closing the copy center, this was a, this is a cost savings to us from the standpoint that the machines that we use in the copy center, we run, we have a .4 of a staff member that runs those copy centers, copies in the copy center. Those machines, they're going to, they're, not, we own the machines, but they're going to stop making parts for those machines because they're old. And so instead of just replacing those machines, we just will close the copy center and not spend the additional cost to replace those machines in there. All copying will then be done locally at the buildings and not at a center. The non-walking field trips, we have established currently an approval process, so looking at, you know, if they are tied to curriculars. So if there is curricular need behind those field trips, they will go through Dr. Debe's office for approval and not just set up on their own. We have eliminated our summer school and jump start. As you know, it didn't happen last summer due to the tornadoes that came through, and so not looking to bring those programs back, as that is a straight cost, because it's our teachers and staff members who run those programs. Still looking at closing Erieview. Obviously, we've redistricted and have drawn those lines. We sent that out as part of a communication. And looking at possibly, what do we do with our PI levy to address some of these now things that Dr. Lovr had talked about that currently will get pulled out of the operating costs to maintain some of these and do some of the repairs that are necessary at the buildings? And like I said, we talked about the last one, the last bullet point already. So I'm going to turn it over to Autumn, that based on this conversation, some of the things that we've already done, what that impact looks like on the five-year forecast.
Before you move on, you skipped busing. Have we not decided what we're doing?
Did I skip busing?
It's okay.
I can't say that.
It's very small for me.
So busing, there has been some conversation. We know that with the redistricting, many of, going to the state minimum of two miles, when we currently bus at .25 miles from schools, may be a hardship on many of our families. And we had a, Dr. Lovr and I sat down with Sue, our Transportation Director, last week to understand what that impact would be, and it certainly would be a loss of several routes. And so one thing for the board to consider, and this is not something you need to vote on today, because you, as part of your yearly business, vote on busing routes, but just to talk publicly about it, you know, the recommendation from us would be, instead of going all the way to a two-mile, state minimum of two miles, that maybe there's a compromise where we look at going only a mile away. So it provides some additional busing for kids now. It saves some of our bus routes as well. So that is the recommendation that we're looking to make to you. And like I said, you vote on bus routes in August, prior to school starting. So if that's a direction you want us to look at for busing, we will look to make that change from the state minimum of two miles to a mile, to see what impact that would be. It's still going to be a cost savings to the district. It just won't be such a hardship on many of our families to get their kids to school.
Would it be possible for us to make a decision on that sooner? Because I can just imagine that will be not feasible to wait till August for people who would then have to plan transportation. So I'm not saying we decide tonight, but perhaps we can talk about when we might be able to do that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that'd be fine. Thanks. So as we look at our forecast, I presented the forecast at our November board meeting, and we mentioned at that point that we have a statutory requirement to have a board-approved forecast sent to the Ohio Department of Education and workforce. So we met that statutory requirement by having the board approve that forecast, but we also said last month that we would revisit once some decisions were made about the direction we were going to go. we were going to go related to the reductions. So this is just an update to our forecast. The board will not approve it tonight. But as we look at the methodology that goes into our forecast, it is based on historical trend and then the current factors that are going on in our community. As I said last month, variables can change at any time. So the forecast is truly a snapshot in time for us. So when we compare our November forecast to December, this first slide here is a copy of our November forecast. And our monthly expenses for this current fiscal year are about $4.5 million per month. So a school district should have at minimum at least 60 days cash on hand, which would be about $9 million. So what we projected prior to reductions, now, the only reduction that was factored in the forecast in November was the closure of Erie View. So all of the reductions that Joelle just mentioned are now factored into our current forecast that has been updated. So if you look at the November forecast, by the end of our five years in fiscal '29, we would have had a negative cash balance without putting a levy on the ballot of about a half million dollars. So as we look at our December forecast, which again, has been updated to include revenue, from a revenue side of things, we now know what our valuation will be in the city. So I received those numbers from the county auditor. So they're no longer projected. They are actual of what our tax share 24 values will be. From an expenditure side of things, I've incorporated all of the items that Joelle has talked about today, with the exception of, we still have some details related to busing that we have to, you know, hammer out before that can be input into the forecast. The board will again update the forecast and provide that to the community as those decisions are made. But as we look at the December forecast, incorporating all of those changes, without a levy, we should be at about $7.2 million positive cash balance by the end of this five-year cycle. But again, 60 days cash on hand at minimum is over $9 million. So we're still not at our 60 days cash on hand. So the board will continue to work through all of the expense reductions. We're going to also have some survey results at our next board meeting from the survey that was conducted. And Joelle spoke to that at our last board meeting. And also then look at what revenue possibilities we can look at for our school district related to future levy options. But I just want to remind the board and our community that even if we pass a levy in calendar '25, the collection of that money does not begin until calendar '26. That's just how it's done. That's, that's, you know, mandated by the state. So that's just an update for the board and the community tonight on where we are financially.
Autumn, can I, can I start here? One thing to you, because I know not everyone can see these numbers on screen. But as we, you'll, you'll upload this recent, just your, your snapshot. We're not formally updating the forecast, but you'll upload these after the meeting. The one point I wanted to make, too, in the forecast that we presented in November, every year showed deficit spending. And that's what took us from where we were at to the negative $535,000 balance. With the changes that we have in here from revenue and expenditures, we are showing that our, we will not be deficit spending for '26 or '27 by a small margin. But then when we get back into years '28 and '29, we are back to deficit spending. And that also kind of pulls to your point about the moves we've made alone justify still a need for additional operating levy.
That's correct.
Remind me, property valuations, we collect in arrears, right? So that's why the '26 jumps, like, okay. Just for people who can't see the numbers, I just was realizing what the updated, which, by the way, you did a pretty good job projecting what the increase was going to be from a revenue perspective.
Thank you.
But just for the benefit of others, in 2025, we don't see the impact of those increased revenues from increased property valuations until 2026.
Correct. So a school district operates on a fiscal year, and our fiscal year is July 1 through June 30. Taxes are collected already a year in arrears. So for example, I referenced here, tax values for calendar tax year 2024. We'll collect those in 2025, calendar year 2025. But that's actually two calendar years that make up a fiscal year. So it can be a little confusing. But the years that are indicated in the five-year forecast are fiscal years at the top. But, but yes, those new values are factored in. I originally factored in November, a 27% increase in residential values, and it came in just over about a 28% increase. So it did generate about a half million more, and more of that was even on a commercial side of things than a residential side.
Okay. Any questions about the forecast? Okay. Before we jump into the next part of the, of the discussion, which Joelle's going to walk through, I just wanted to kind of interject a little comment about process and, and where we're at with things. And over the past three or four weeks, I've kind of been the board designee to help work with our administration here on this. So I appreciate them putting up with me and my zillion questions. But, you know, the obvious question that everyone's asking is, well, what are you going to do next? And so we're going to get into some of that this, this evening. But I want to caution that what we're about to present is going to be some factual scenarios that have some variability, which we'll talk about. But while this is going on, we know that there's a survey going on out in the public that is getting feedback about what the community wants to do. And so tonight, we are going to kind of present factually what these scenarios would look like, without necessarily debating them pros and cons. And that's really important because we don't want to pollute. So for those of you who will be hearing these possible scenarios for the first time, you're going to form your opinions, just like we did when we were putting these together, or when I said administration was putting these together. And we would really like people to marinate on them and give us honest feedback coming in January, which we're going to create some space around some of our meetings to do that, along with the survey feedback that we're getting. So if we were to sit up here today and go through each one of these scenarios that we're going to talk about, and each of the board members weigh in on, oh, we like this, or we don't like that, it might influence the input of the community, and we don't want to do that. We really want to present these fairly and honestly, and so that when we do get to the point down the road about possibly making decision, we, we haven't necessarily influenced that feedback. So I wanted to lay that out because it may seem a little awkward that we're going to go through these things and then not sit, we will ask questions as a board, but we're not going to debate the pros and cons tonight. Does that make sense for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So with that, Joelle, if you want to kind of jump into the scenarios that we're looking at and what, what each of them mean, that'd be helpful.
Okay. So as we've mentioned here, and I just, I will say it one more time, that our footprint has a direct impact on our operating budget. So the more facilities, the more buildings we are running, the more it takes out of our operational budget. So people, I know people are said, you know, we're, you've heard the community, we can't talk about, they don't want new buildings, they don't want new buildings. And we're going to talk through some scenarios here where, okay, there is an option, obviously, if it's just operating only, to see what that impact will have if we just looked at operating out by itself, outside of pairing it with some type of option that includes a building. So looking at this, and I, and I also want to be clear in that, you know, we, we started on the ballot back in 2023 in November with $170 million project, and it failed. And that was not an operating ask in that. We sent some survey, we, out to our community, we got some feedback. People had said that they liked the integrity of the project of looking at building two elementary schools and a middle school. So we tried to figure out a way that we could reduce the cost of that project, which we did. We got that down to $155 million project. But in addition, the survey data also told us that, don't ask us twice, we know you also need operating money. So when we came back in November of 2024, we put a reduced cost of a project on the ballot, as well as the operating levy. And our community spoke to us again and said no to both of those issues. And so while we hear that, our needs still remain. We still have buildings that are failing. We still have operational needs, as you saw from Autumn's forecast. So trying to take the feedback that we're hearing from our community now twice, and still trying to come up with some other options to put out there because our needs still exist. And so here is looking at one option, which we're just calling Option 1, and it's looking at building a new grade five to eight middle school. So what that would, what impact that would have, it would be closing the current Troy, closing the current Learwood. We would look at constructing this building on the current site of Learwood, where the 5-8 would be. And we would look to repair the existing K-4 elementary schools. We, you know, we're closing Erie View, so the other three, looking at what those repair costs would be. To be able to do this, the financial impact, we would have to put on a bond issue. The cost of the building through the architect that we work with was able to provide a cost. So $87.7 million would be the total bond. 67.7 of that would be for the new construction of that 5-8 building. It leaves $20 million that for us to do the repairs necessary at the elementary schools. An operating levy that would require $3 million because we would still be maintaining five facilities in this option. So we would have the three K-4 elementary schools, we would have the one 5-8 building, and we would have our high school. So our footprint would decrease, next year, it's going to decrease to six buildings. In this option, it would decrease it to five. So the operating request or needs to continue to operate five buildings is about $3 million a year for operating money.
And that's for 10 years. A $3 million for 10 years.
Yes, for yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question, though?
Yeah.
And maybe Ned, this is for you. On those repairs, you talked about high, moderate, and I can't remember the last category. When we look at this number, is this like a high, moderate repair?
It would address high and elevated needs. We'd be looking to prioritize high and elevated. It would not do everything on the list, but it would do our highest priority needs. Yes.
Okay.
So Option 2 is looking at a new pre-K-6 building at the current Troy site, and a new K-6, looking at the Eastview site, and looking to repair Learwood. So this would not address some of the, some of the needs that we have at Learwood, but it would provide two pre-K-6, in a K-6 building. In this particular option, the district would go from running the six facilities that we will be running next year down to four. So we would have two K-6, we'd have the 7-8, and we'd have the high school, would be our four buildings that we maintain. This option is about $109.2 million. Again, those numbers for building, those new buildings, came directly from the architect that we've been working with. So 99.2 million of that, it would leave 10 million for the repairs that are needed at Learwood. And by, again, reducing the number of facilities that we would be running, it also reduces the need for the $3 million, down to $2.5 billion for 10 years for our operating. And again, it's that direct correlation between the number of facilities that we're running and the operating needs of the district. So in this particular case, it would, we would have four buildings. And Option 3, looking at a new pre-K-5, one, just one school at the Troy site, and a 6-8 building at the current Learwood site. This, in this option, it would reduce our footprint from six buildings down to, down to three buildings. So in terms of being most cost-effective from the standpoint that you're running less facilities, we're cutting our facilities in half. In this particular option, this is also an expensive option. It's one, it's $141.6 million bond issue to be able to construct a large enough pre-K-5 elementary school and the 6-8 building. But because, again, in this particular option, we're going from six down to three, the operating needs are about $2 million a year for the next 10 years. And this would, this would, the impact on this would close all of our current K-8 buildings. So all of our elementary schools, Troy and Learwood, and build us two brand-new buildings, along with keeping the high school. And Option 4 is, is that option that, you know, we've heard people say is just please ask for operating and no new construction, like, let's just look at what we can do to maintain the building. Unfortunately, there's two, there's two options that we could look at. And Option 4A is looking at an $8 million operating levy only. So if we do nothing, if we are keeping all six of our buildings and we do nothing, as we stated, many of those repairs that are needed, they come out of our operating budget. We don't have the PI funds available to us to address all of the needs at the buildings. So this would require an $8 million operating only levy for the next 10 years. And again, that's not addressing any of the needs, repairs in any of the building. Option 4B, which is the same thing, it's asking for operating money, $5 million a year, but with a $60 million bond issue attached to that. And that would still maintain the six buildings that we have, do the necessary repairs in order of, of priority. And if we're going to do that to, to be able to have those buildings then up and running in a more efficient manner, changing lighting is going to reduce our energy costs of $5 million a year. Operating levy would be needed to, to maintain all six of our buildings and just do repairs to them.
Joel, just a clarifying question. The, in both options, the operating dollars, so Option 4A, $8 million a year for operating, that is just operating with the existing cuts that we've already announced. That is not operating to restore anything like SOAR, anything like we've cut. That, that is just what we need to operate.
And, and that is a true statement in all of your options. So in all of the options, when we've asked for any type of operating money, it is assuming this is what we are going to need moving forward from today. Any time that the board or would like to bring something back. So if it was an option to bring back full-day kindergarten as we knew it before, if it was an option to bring back programming as we knew it before, or we know it this year, every single one of those bringbacks is adding that cost back into our operating budget. So in, in a situation like the first, where we needed $3 million, if there was a decision made to bring back full-day kindergarten as we know it today, we know that that cost to us is about $600,000. So now, that $3 million in operating money now becomes $2.4 million in operating money. So every time you bring something back, it cuts into the operating ask that we're asking. Because the operating ask that we're, that you're looking at in all of these options is based on what we've done so far.
My, my face was because wouldn't it be 3.6, not 2.4?
Well, no, because you're taking the money, the cost out of...
If we are getting $3 million of revenue, additional revenue through a levy...
Oh, my head went to what we'd be asking the community for.
No, yeah, no.
Yeah. You were saying, yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
But is that the kind of feedback that you're looking for the community as we leave tonight? You know, I think those details are important for people to understand, you know, what constitutes these numbers.
Sure.
You know, and I think we're saying it here, and I'm sure we'll design a communication plan, but I would imagine that's the kind of stuff we'd want to hear from people.
Yeah. And the survey that was done, and again, not everyone got a survey, it's a scientific survey done by a research company. They've asked options, looking at those four, those four things that we just talked about, you know, like, would you be more likely to do this than that? And so it's, we've put that information out there. That's why we're talking about it, I think, tonight, and we'll continue to talk about it in January as well. And this is just a summary slide that summarizes all those options of what they were. So Option 1 is the 5-8 middle, middle school repair, or repair K-4s. And it shows you the number of buildings to maintain. And each one of those scenarios, what the operating ask would be. ask would be in those scenarios, what the new bond amount would be for those scenarios, and bond repairs in a couple of those scenarios. So to look at, you know, because we were able to have some costs know, when we were looking at this, here's the options, which, with costs associated per $100,000. We do have a reduction in our taxes of this coming up in 2026 for the bond that is currently on from what we did here at the high school. So the net cost per $100,000 of home value, you can see for Option 1 is $95 per $100,000. Option 2 is 107. Option 3, being the most expensive, the one giant elementary school and the one middle school, about $131, and so forth, 114 and 111. These, these costs per $100,000 are significantly less than what the ask was back in November of 2024, so taking in that consideration that we heard from our community, and in 2023. So we have some comparison numbers from past ballots, where the cost per $100,000 in 2023, when we asked, was $266 a year per $100,000 of value. The ask that we were asking for in 2024, the cost was $414 per $100,000 in value. And then you can see the options for Option 1, 2, 3, and 4, that we just discussed, what those, those numbers are per that $100,000. And you can see, you know, in any of those scenarios, it is less than what was asked for in 2023, and less than what we asked for in 2024. So trying really to balance what our, what our school district still needs with what we're hearing from our community, to try to come back and get that, that sweet spot, or what that comfort level is for both of our community, and still providing an opportunity for us to generate some additional operating levies, so that these cuts that we've made don't have to continue.
And for those that will look at this later, because all this will be online, right after this meeting, and it's online, it's not a mistake where, in Option 4, we're asking for only $8 million, it looks like. How is that more expensive than asking for all this other money with the new buildings? And I don't know if it's, Joelle or Autumn can, can explain a little, not in the details, but just, it's the type of, it's the time period over we're collecting those dollars, which is why operating-only tends to be one of the most expensive asks of the community.
Correct. So when we, when we ask for operating-only money, we have to generate that dollar amount annually. So for example, let me just grab my microphone here, so I can turn around and look at the screen. No, that's okay. So when, when we look at, at this, we're looking at an $8 million operating levy versus Option 4B is a $5 million operating levy with a $60 million bond issue. So the reason Option A would be more expensive, we need to collect 8 million annually. In Option 4B, we're collecting 5 million annually, and we're spreading out that 60 million over 37 years. So that's why the costs are different.
I just want to also point on this slide. This slide, for comparative purposes, is the gross cost of all the levies, not counting or not being reduced by that, that, that bond that is falling off the books. And I just want to be clear about this, that tax burden that is coming off happens regardless in any scenario, because it's, it's a bond that's falling off. So just because we have an operating levy, or a bond levy, or whatever combination that we ultimately decide, there will be a reduction coming from that. But just to make it comparatively, that last slide is the gross cost before the reduction.
And that, that will be on the ballot, because we have the list...
Yes, and that's the reason why we did it this way, is that when you go to the ballot, you see, you don't see expiring offsets, you see what is the gross cost that's levied. And every time that we've gone to the ballot, we ask for the gross cost. So if anyone pulls up any of our notes from last time, you will see, we said it was 266, then it was 414, and then the numbers that we're presenting here.
And unlike last time, even though Options 1, 2, 3, and I think 4B ask for both operating money and bond money for construction, they will be combined in one...
No, 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 no.
Nope.
They cannot be, no. They will be separate issues. Make sure the clarification...
But that bond issue that's falling off, that's January 2026, right?
So again, because taxes...
It would be timed at the same time, unlike Pat in the past.
It would be 2026 collected in 2027, so falling off in 2026. So just to speak to what you were asking, Mike, I think this is a great question, as we discussed this last November, because remember, November of '23, we only had building, we only had a bond issue on the ballot. But November of '24, we had a bond issue plus operating money. We are not allowed by state law to combine operating money with a bond issue if we choose to put an emergency operating levy on the ballot. As a taxpayer myself, I will tell you, it is cheaper for the taxpayer to separate those levies. That is very strategic on the board's part, because it will save our taxpayers' money. And, and that's a complicated story that I'm always happy to talk about with anyone that wants to give me a call, but it has to do with several factors, one being, the school district is on what's called the 20 mil floor. And when you're on the 20 mil floor, it's advantageous to put an emergency levy on the ballot, because it's cheaper for the taxpayer. But it, it forces the board to have to place those on the ballot as two separate issues, if that's the direction the board chooses to go.
So Autumn, may I ask, then, on, so in the 2024 box that we just put on, we have the gross, total gross, but we have it broken out per, you know, what the numbers are, but we do not have them broken out for the options. Can we break them out? So it's not, 165 for Option 1 is really a portion for the bond and a portion for the operating levy. And then, obviously, we don't have to, we're not making any decisions tonight, but we will have to have a discussion is, same risk that we ran in November, what if one passes and the other does not? If they see, like, oh, whatever one's cheaper, I'm only going to vote for one, whatever one's cheaper, I'm going to vote for that. But they are intertwined, what, you know, we're going to have to have a discussion then. That's not enough operating money if they don't both pass.
That's exactly right. They're very much intertwined, but again, very strategic on the board's part, because it saves our taxpayers' money by separating these two levies. And it's just how school funding works, how taxes work, and the types of levies we have to work with. We can combine an operating levy with a bond issue. It's called a current expense levy. If we do that, and that would be one ballot question that the taxpayer would answer when you go to vote, it will cost you more money to do that than it would by separating those issues and choosing an emergency levy over a current expense levy. They're both operating levies, but they're structured different in the eyes of the law, Ohio Revised Code.
Autumn, how difficult would it be to take one of these options and show me what it would look like to combine them? How difficult is that?
It wouldn't be difficult. I would be happy to do that for the board. We can model that for our community. We actually did that at a work session for our November of '24.
Well, I know we've done it before.
Yes, we can definitely do that.
I'm not saying for all of them, but I think it is illustrative in terms of what we're trying to accomplish, and, I don't know, just to see it.
So I want to get us a little back on, continue to ask questions, but maybe just, again, to focus people on what this process is for us going forward. So we are restricted by law with the dates and times of when we can pass resolutions, and what can get on the ballot for May if we choose to move forward. So we have to have resolutions passed at the January 6th board meeting, right after the first of the year, to have our first set of the two-part resolutions to have anything moved forward. So our plan is at the January 6th meeting to bring back our, the folks who conduct the survey to report on that, and to create space during that meeting to get input from the public about, about these options. Regardless of what we do that night, we're still, nothing goes on the ballot after that night, it just passes the resolution, and then we continue to get feedback through the month of January, and then what's the, so the date of our regular meeting is when?
So that will be January 21st, I believe.
So January 21st, if we choose to put something on the ballot, that is when we pick, we don't, it's a pick four, we, if we choose one, we pick one at that time. But on the January 6th meeting, we could choose to continue to bring all four of them forward if we wanted to at that point in time, correct?
Correct.
What's the risk, Joelle, about waiting till November? I guess I get nervous not knowing what our future would hold, I guess, just in my own mind, if we waited, didn't do May, and we waited till November.
I don't know if there is a risk, per se, because you're not collecting the money until 2026 anyways. That would be up to you guys to kind of figure out. I don't know if there's a risk to it.
I would, I would just say, other than delaying the engaging of the architects to design, everything we push back nine months, construction costs do not get cheaper.
Right.
So it just keeps getting more expensive.
I think the other...
I guess you do run the risk a little bit of, you know, having some increased costs. And, you know, one of the things, as, as Dr. Lawver noted this evening, even the difference from the cost set of 2019 to 2024, so any delay is going to have that same effect, even on if you're doing a repair, and it's going to have the same effect on, this is the cost of the building right now. So the longer you delay, you run that risk of that cost of that project going up.
Well, and I worry about the risks for you, Ned, too, in terms of knowing what you're going to repair and what not, what can we hold, you know, there's, there's a lot in motion here. Thanks for the random question, but I think it's probably on the minds of a lot of people.
I would also add that delaying really only provides a couple more months, is all it would provide, because we're still required, as Mr. Stobie explained, we're still required to pass two resolutions. Those resolutions have to be passed almost 100 days in advance of the election. So that would mean probably, we don't have a July board meeting typically, but even if we did, you know, we would be passing those resolutions in July...
Oh, that's true.
Versus January. So I guess I would just add that, as I do believe that's, that's one more consideration that I think the board has to look at.
I appreciate you saying that, yeah.
So obviously, we have people here today that are listening and seeing the slides. For someone who is not listening, who might be, sees these slides, what's their mechanism to ask questions between now? Do we have that feedback address still available?
We still have the feedback at alcsoh.org, but they can also reach out to Joelle, Dr. Lawver, Autumn, myself, depending on what their specific questions are. But we also, that mailbox, I do route the questions to whoever they need to go to.
Okay.
And the presentations that we're looking at tonight and have presented, those are actually, if you go into Board Docs, they are an attachment within Board Docs, so...
They're all live.
They're all there right now, if you wanted to go home and view those, but they will be there tomorrow as well.
They will also be sent home in a link in my email on Friday. Yeah, to the community.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was a lot of discussion. I know we have a lot more discussion ahead, but I'm glad we got that process started tonight. We'll look forward to getting as much feedback as we can before we work towards making a decision. All right. So with that, we're going to move on to the Treasures Report.
Thank you. I would appreciate if the board would consider approving the consent items. So this is all consent items, our normal business for our board. We have our regular monthly reports, appropriation amendments, the approval of then and now, purchase orders. We also have the approval of high school fees for the upcoming school year. We do approve these fees now versus waiting until around April or May, because the course of studies will be going out in the near future for the high schools. So the high school fees are on the agenda for tonight, and that is all of my consent items tonight.
It's a really short report for you.
Yeah, it was a really short.
I only went down to letter F, I was like, is that, is that all of it? Any questions for Autumn? I have a motion to approve the Treasures Consent Items.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So a next item is a, kind of a process item that we need to do. So at our January meeting, we elect our officers for the year, and we need to elect a president pro tempore to preside over the organizational meeting, which, and kicks that process off. So can I nominate Mike Sherman to be the president pro tempore? Let me...
So moved.
Can I roll, please?
Did you nominate somebody?
He nominated Mike.
So Mrs. Gardner nominated Mr. Sherbin, and it was seconded by Mrs. Macavina. So Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
I don't know if I can vote, but...
You are allowed to vote if you choose to. Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Not to be outdone, but Joelle, it looks like your superintendent consent report is pretty short this night, too.
Mine is very short as well. We have a friend of the schools, which is a donation that is made to the school district. There are certified recommendations, classified, some supplemental recommendations on there as well. We have one additional board legal counsel that was not on the original list. As you know, you approve your legal counsel at the organizational meeting in January. Due to the TIF with the city and some other tax abatement issues that the city is asking for, we have engaged with a legal counsel that does that. That's, that's what they handle, is real estate transactions, anything that has to do with municipalities through the city. So this is just to approve, to be able to continue to use that, that legal service.
Okay. Any questions? I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent items.
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Maynard, do you have any other items tonight to discuss?
I do not. I hope and wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season.
All right. Could I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned at 7:30.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.